And Commissioner Fry?
Present.
Thank you. Wonderful. We can hear you. And Commissioner Will?
Present.
Thank you very much. And we have seven commissioners present. And we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin the Director's Report, we had on the agenda today, Item F, the Chair and Vice Chair Elections. And I'd like to suggest that we move that to the end of the agenda after planning Commission announcements and just want to make sure that there's no objection to that. Thank you. With that, may we have the Director's Report?
Thank you, Vice Chairman Oribidu and Commissioners. I'm Carol Johnson, Planning and Development Services Manager. It's, this is my first meeting chairing on this seat, I guess, with Erin moving on to her role, Erin Mordell moving on to her role as Assistant Director of LUT. So we've got quite a few updates. First of all, we want to welcome our two new Commissioners, Nina Carlson, who's from District Three. She's got a range of experience with utility managements, community and government affairs, real estate, and service on other boards and commissions. So welcome, Commissioner Carlson, as well as Commissioner James Just, who's representing District Four. We're pleased that you're bringing your rural land use experience. And this has gained from almost thirty-five years owning and operating a twenty-five acre CSA near, on the family farm near North Plains. So welcome, Commissioner Just. Both the new Commissioners have completed their new Commissioner training, and so they're ready to get going. Also joining us tonight are Jacqueline Sato and virtually Vamshi Reddy, both are Senior Assistant County Councils, who'll be alternating duties supporting the Planning Commission. We do have one vacancy that we're recruiting. It is posted online. If you go to the county's webpage and search for Boards and Commissions, and then scroll down to Planning Commission, you'll see an opportunity to apply. And we'd like to encourage everyone to pass the word around and, and send them that direction so that we can fill this important vacancy. In terms of actions that pertain to the Commission, since you last met, on January thirtieth, the Board took a vote and unanimously adopted a engrossed ordinance number eight-nine-seven, and that updated the county's comprehensive plan to reflect the River Terrace 2.0 UGB expansion area. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the originally filed ordinance on August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. That was the original version, and then the engrossed ordinance made changes to reflect the changes associated with the Significant Natural Resources Ordinance, engrossed ordinances nine oh one and nine oh two, as well as changes to the State Transportation Planning Rule Ordinance nine oh three. We're also tracking another UGB potential expansion in North Plains. The City Council Planning Commission had a joint work session on March third. Todd has been attending and keeping tabs on what's going that, on, in that regard. So, and there will be a future work session where he'll bring information about that future expansion, potential future expansion back to the rest of the Commission. We have a very busy legislative session underway. There's been a number of bills impacting every aspect of planning, from development review, timelines for the County Surveyor to approve Platts, building permit reviews, affordable housing, you know, it runs the gamut. And so there, the things should calm down a little bit, though, next Friday, or no, this Friday, the twenty-first. So that's where there's kind of like a go-no-go process, and we'll see what is really got legs to move forward, and then we can focus our review a little bit more constructively. And once we have a little bit clearer kind of legislative agenda, we'll, we'll make sure to update the, the Commission as we get that information. There's a development forum. We, we hold these twice a year in the spring and in the fall. And so the next one is coming up in just a couple of weeks, on April tenth. It will be held from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, excuse me, ten AM in this room. And it's an event for developers, contractors, related professionals. The, the building official, Derek Moon, will be present to talk about some of the technology improvements they're implementing. And we'll also be talking about a new transportation assessment review process. So this is how cities, or developers that are developing in cities that need access to county roads can have a more, a clear and more expedited process for having their projects reviewed and getting the appropriate feedback to those other agencies. And then we'll also be doing a review of the proposed fee increases that will be across the board, as well as two new fees to help offset anticipated cuts to the general fund. You all should have received an email from the county inviting you to a celebration appreciation event of volunteers, twenty-twenty-five volunteer appreciation celebration. And that is on Thursday, April twenty-fourth at five-thirty at the Wingspan Event and Conference Center in Hillsborough. And there is a link to RSVP in that email, and if not, you can contact Todd and he can connect you. Also, we've got both Teresa and Diame here. We've recently updated their titles, and we're gonna have to update their, their nameplates to Section Manager. So we've incorporated Section Manager into Teresa's title as Community Planning Section Manager, and Diame is now the Transportation Planning Section Manager. And it just acknowledges their role as managers. There's been no promotions or pay increases, but just a recognition of the work that they do managing their important teams. And then, lastly, you should soon be receiving an email from Board Clerk Kevin Moss. This is an annual requirement to file your Statement of Economic Interest. It's an electronic form, very easy to complete. It covers the twenty-twenty-four calendar year and is required by all elected officers, as well as appointees to Boards and Commissions. So we can transition over to today's meeting. We've got two work session topics, and then we'll move on at the end of the agenda to the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. So, as the next item would be the Public Communication.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And yes, welcome, Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Just. We're very excited that you're here with us. Um, so the next item on the agenda is Public Communication. Is anyone signed up to speak on matters not on the agenda?
We have no one signed up, and we have no one in the room or online who are not affiliated with the county or Commissioner.
Okay, we can move on then to our work session, which the first one is the Transportation Safety Action Plan.
Vice Chair, Diame Valentine, for the record, Principal Transportation Planner, or I'm still not used to my new title. Station Planning Section Manager. And with me is Shelley O'Leary, Rapid Analyst and our Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator, and co-leading this project. So thank you for giving us some time to share this project overview, the Transportation Safety Action Plan with you this evening. Got the steering wheel here. So just a quick overview of the presentation. We want to provide a little background on what the project is, and then dig into kind of the status of where we are in the project and what's gonna kind of guide us through our process, as well as some next steps. So just a little background, safety is front of mind for Washington County and land use and transportation. It's first goal on our Transportation System Plan. It is, and something that is not new to us. We've been really at the forefront in many respects with safety being kind of a priority and something that has guided a lot of our decision-making over the last thirty-five plus years. So nothing new to us, but in terms of how we're framing it and structuring it, this is a little bit sort of new. We have, we completed a Transportation Safety Assessment back in twenty-eighteen. It was actually completed in twenty-sixteen, and Shelley helped lead that work as well. That was a Safety Action Plan in name. It did not meet kind of what is best practice now in terms of the guidance at the federal level, which came out of this Federal Safe Streets For All Program, which established new guidelines for compliant transportation safety action plans. And so this led us to pursuing a grant that they made available to do a compliant transportation safety action plan. We were successful in that grant application in partnership with Metro, as well as City of Tigard is also a sub-recipient, and East Multnomah County is conducting a similar assessment. So there's numerous efforts on this front happening, happening within the region. And so we are leveraging a lot of that work that is happening in partnership as well. So this is a good opportunity for us, and, and what we anticipate accomplishing as a result of this work is, one, becoming, meeting that federal eligibility to pursue additional funding, so construction funding potentially for improving our, the safety of our roadways countermeasures. Also presents an opportunity for us to engage more meaningfully and educate the public around these safety issues and concerns. With that, we hope to strengthen relationships with our community members and partners, and really developing a culture of safety and opportunity for collaboration with all of our partners. Ultimately, we hope to identify safety strategies, programs, and projects to address the key contributing factors that are leading to fatal and severe crashes, and prioritize those projects. This will also have policy implications, potentially informing various upcoming efforts, including our Transportation Safety, Transportation System Plan update. So, quick timeline, we are fairly early in the process. We have kicked off the project late in twenty-twenty-four. We're in the process of, we've stood up a couple committees. We're working with inter-agency partners and Technical Advisory Committee, as well as a Community Advisory Committee. Project team has held kind of the first initial meetings with those groups. We've done, we have a consultant on contract, and they're doing a kind of robust safety assessment and data collection process. This will help kind of inform some of our needs, and we will ultimately develop some solutions, address, addressing those kind of priority emphasis areas around our, our safety needs, and then ultimately finalizing and approving a plan later this year or early twenty-twenty-six. With that, I'm gonna turn to Shelley to kind of walk through some of the safety, some of the analysis findings.
Yeah, since we completed our last assessment in twenty-eighteen, you know, we would continue to do work, the important work of, of improving safety on all of our roads. And, but one of the things we still see is that over the last five years, that there is continuing to be people that are killed and seriously injured with life-altering injuries happening on our roadways. And that's about eleven hundred people, eleven hundred and three, because everyone counts, eleven hundred and three in Washington County. The one thing that we should realize, though, that based on our population, that rate is a lot lower than a lot of our neighboring counties. I think that's really important. That shows that some of the work that we are doing does make, has been making a difference. So it could be a lot worse, but we, we also know it can be a lot better. So the, the one thing that is very, has been very interesting is that overall, the crashes that are happening around the county have been decreasing. However, the number of those fatal and serious life-altering injury crashes has increased. And there's a number of reasons of why that, that may be happening. But we will be looking into some of those trends and factors. But this is something that is very consistent with what we're seeing throughout the state and throughout, and throughout the nation about crash statistics, that there is a trend in, upward trend in the fatal and serious injury category. So one of the leading questions we ask as part of this plan is, okay, what are the factors that are contributing to those crashes that are happening? And particularly, we're interested in the ones that make the biggest difference in people's lives, those ones that, where there's a fatality and a life-altering injury. And so what we'll be looking at is what kind of behaviors of people, whether they're the driver or somebody walking, what is involved in that behavior that might contribute to the crash? And then also looking at what kind of characteristics are happening at the time of the crash. We get a lot of this data from the Oregon Department of Transportation. It's through these DMV and crash reports. So we, they get sent in, and then we get reports, often with a delay, that has a lot of this information. There's a little delay in getting those back to us, but those are what we, we will be analyzing as part of our Transportation Safety Action Plan, looking more into that, those, those factors. So one of the key things about this Transportation Safety Action Plan that is a little different than our past efforts is that we're taking on looking at this plan with the Safe Systems approach. And it's a, it's an approach that's been broadcast nationally, something that's been very much encouraged. And really, this approach takes into the fact that it takes multiple pieces, multiple elements to come together to really reduce the number of fatal and serious injuries. It's not just one piece. There's multiple pieces of the wheel here that all need to come together and can be addressed at that. And that means looking at safer people, encouraging that behavior that is acceptable, and also looking at safer vehicles. This is the requirements for different kinds of systems, technologies in our vehicles that minimize the impacts of those crashes and, and deaths resulting from those. Looking at speeds of our roadways, safe roads. That's often where our, like, our last Transportation Safety Action Plan looked at, and traditionally it's looked at, is, you know, how is our system designed? How does it operate? The thing, how does traffic signals work? Those are the common things that we think of as part of a, a plan. But also, you know, looking at the court care once a crash has occurred, of how, how people are treated to make sure that, should their crash happen, are they getting the, the services they need to survive those crashes? Those are the, the basic elements, and really the principles are what's surrounding that circle. The first is that humans make mistakes. We're all gonna make mistakes, and acknowledging that, and that humans are vulnerable. We're, we're, we, we bleed. So we need to make, take into account that, that we are, make mistakes, that we're vulnerable, but we also have shared responsibility for each other and for safety. And it's not just one, one piece that can, can solve the problem, but there's a lot. That, one of the other key, key principles is that safety is proactive. We don't have to wait for a crash to happen to start addressing some of the root risks and causes in our system and behaviors and all those elements that we are talking about. One, another element is redundancy is crucial, that if we start making improvements in multiple, multiple pieces of this area, the, the more likely we are to save those lives. And the last one is that, really, we have to change the culture that death and serious injuries because of crashes is not really an acceptable thing. That, that's something that we need to work towards, that they're preventable, and that we can all, through these various elements, contribute to those reductions. Well, this is the big picture kind of approach that's gonna be the framework for our Transportation Safety Action Plan going forward.
So one aspect that the Safe Streets For All Program asks recipients of this grant is to establish a goal that sets targets for eliminating deaths and serious injuries. And that is one thing that our previous assessment essentially said we were going to strive towards zero deaths, and that's been, that's a typical framing. But this, the grant requirement is that we are to establish a, a a target in which we will achieve zero deaths by a specific date, or that we will make a significant reduction by a specific date with an ultimate goal towards of zero deaths and serious injuries by a certain date. And so it, it's establishing some targets in which we could pro, make, monitor and, and report progress towards, over the timeframe of this plan. That's one thing that we're working with our Community Advisory Committee and our Technical Advisory Committee Partners on kind of framing that up to advise and ultimately incorporate into the plan. A couple of examples that are available, readily available within the state, as well as within the county. The state itself has established a, a target of zero deaths and life-changing injuries by twenty-thirty-five. Douglas County, another counterpart, is in draft form, but they are essentially saying something similar. They're saying towards, strive towards zero deaths and injuries. They have yet to establish a specific reduction timeline, but saying that they are identifying twenty-thirty-five as a target. Salem Kaiser has established zero deaths and life-changing injuries by twenty-thirty-five with a mid-target reduction by twenty-thirty. And then Hillsborough has established a zero death and serious injuries by twenty-thirty-five timeline. So those are some examples that, that we have available to us to, as we are considering what type of a, a target or goal to establish for this plan. So some of the next steps, we are, as I mentioned, the project team is engaging with a Community Advisory Committee and a Technical Advisory Committee, and they will be bringing forward key touchpoints over the next few months through fall. We are also anticipating community engagement online, as well as in person, and having kind of targeted focus groups as well to kind of round, round out our engagement through the summer and early fall, and ultimately bringing forward a draft plan for consideration by our Board in winter. I believe with that, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions, take any comments.
Do Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Uh, thank you. It's super interesting. I assume the answer is yes, but I don't want to assume. The committee that y'all are, the Advisory Committee, I assume there's bikers and people who aren't car-dependent as part of that committee.
That's correct. Yeah, we have representation with, from folks who bring some life experience around multiple interests, but that include people who are primarily reliant on walking and biking as modes of transportation.
I went on a biking tour of the Bearden area a couple of months ago. It was very enlightening. I'm a very scared biker, but I went with people who were willing to hold my hand. And it was, it was very informative, because it could be a bit scary out there. So I appreciate this work very much.
That's great. I think we need more of that kind of trainer.
Yes.
Mentor.
Yes.
Commissioner Will?
Thank you. I like to see that graph that showed the, the chart of, of trends, you know, going down. I'm gonna be very curious to see, like, if, if you put those same numbers by, by accident type or accident cause, if there are any, if there are any trends, like, you know, maybe accident caused by speed is going down, because people are starting to go to the speed limit, but accident caused by, by poor facilities is going up, or some interesting trends. So I don't know if that's an, an intent, but I, I think that'd be really interesting, because if we're doing a lot of investment in, you know, improving intersections, and that's, that's paying off, it'd be, it'd be really nice. And what made me think about that was your, your comment about, I'm sorry, the, I just, I blanked out there for a second on the, what, what sparked my, my, my thought process. But anyways, I, I think that would be good, you know, to, to learn about, so we can make sure we put our, our dollars where it's needed. If, if we see the reason for changing in crash deaths going down is people are, are, are using safer facilities due to our investments, then we should keep that up, you know? And if, if we see that crashes are not going down, because people are not stopping speeding, then maybe enforcement or something. So it'll help guide us. I, I think it'll be really nice to see that broken out. So I appreciate your presentation.
Yeah, that's a great, great point. We are in, in that process of analyzing those crash trends and, and trying to tease out those major contributing factors and, and comparing where the, the most substantial impacts are, and to help us identify where the greatest benefits may be as well. So, great comment. That's in process. We'll be happy to share some of those findings.
Commissioner Carlson?
So, three quick questions for you. The planning grant, are we, with all the changes that the federal government, I don't know, are there any worries about us receiving that money? Are we good?
We are good, yeah.
Okay.
We're, we're obligated there.
So the, the check is in the, the account?
Yes, we continue to reimburse us, yep.
Um, is there a sanction? I know, I saw that one of the requirements was to reach zero or have a large reduction. Is there a sanction if whatever goal is met or put out there is not met?
No, there, there isn't. I think that the, because there's multiple, those multiple elements, and they understand that not just every, one entity has impact on a portion of that, but we don't control all of it, you know, like, we don't control vehicle technology, right? So I think that acknowledges that you need to have some goal and be working towards it, and have some evidence-based strategies that are helping you address those factors. But, and we'd like to see measured progress over time. I think that's really what they want to see, is that you're monitoring, looking at how you're performing with, compared to what your strategies are.
Well, that accountability and, and measuring what matters is, is always good. Last question would be, I saw the goal for a lot of these other jurisdictions was two thousand and thirty-five. I saw one jurisdiction created that goal in two thousand and twenty-one. Are we gonna push that out, because our goal would not be created till at least two thousand and twenty-five? And does funding levels that the county or the cities have, is that And does funding levels that the county or the cities have, uh, is that going to change any assumptions or goals that we make?
Yeah, I think that's a great, great point and something that will be taken into consideration in terms of, you know, what, what's really achievable and, uh, by what timeframe. So those are important. We will, for our transportation system plan update, which I think we will probably align this plan with in terms of the time horizon, it will be 2045 for our next update. So that's probably the timeline that we will be considering.
I think some of the other one, other jurisdictions chose 2035 to be consistent with ODOT. Is that there's also, so there's, there's a multiple ways you can look at aligning it, either lining it with your TSP, aligning it with ODOT and their funding streams and their, uh, their goals. So yeah, that will all be open for discussion, um, moving forward.
Commissioner Rosenberg.
To clarify, these are reports, all the statistics are related to any motor vehicle accident, whether it's two vehicles, multiple vehicles, vehicle and pedestrian.
And I, the reported at least, yeah.
Yeah, anything that involves a motor vehicle where the, a report, uh, DMV requires a report, which basically I think everybody knows, like if it's over like $1,500, you need to file a report for that. And then.
And readily available. I should note that there's typically like two, two-year delay in terms of when we get information, um, relayed to us and kind of prepared and, and they kind of need to prepare the data in a way that's usable for us. So it takes about two years for us to get that information.
Okay. Uh, my other question is, do we or will we be able to identify if these accidents are happening on our rural roads? Um, is that something that will be vetted and, and brought together? Yes, this is something that's a little bit different this round with, with our TSP. It's, we're trying to be more comprehensive and one of the parts of this is that really acknowledging that those, those roadway characteristics and factors are different for the urban area than the, the rural area. And before by mixing them, you know, uh, obviously there's going to be more crashes happening in the urban area just because of the density of vehicles and people. Uh, but that doesn't, but, and the strategies, um, so they kind of got lost. The role never rise to the top, but separating them out, it's really going to be two parts to this, our, our plan. It's that we'll have rural area analysis and strategies and solutions in addition to the urban area strategies and solution. That will be very helpful. Again, um, what we found is that it's some of the preliminary that the crashes in the rural areas are actually increasing faster.
Severe, I know.
They tend to be the more severe.
More severely in the rural areas, um, than in the urban areas. I mean, they're both increasing, but more, more substantially, um, in the rural area. So we want to make sure we have strategies for both areas that are separate. Um, very specific to help us be more targeted with those solutions. And also the, the funding opportunities and streams are different for the urban areas and the rural area. So we want, you know, if you're in the metro region, that's different than if you're outside. There's different, different funding sources. This is also recognizes that, will recognize that as well.
All of these statistics are for Washington County as a whole, even though we only speak for the portions that are unincorporated, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And there will be so, an emphasis on kind of county-owned and maintained roads, but we do, we obviously have a lot of facilities that, uh, bisect, uh, incorporated communities as well, so.
Commissioner Will.
Uh, uh, thanks. I, some of the other commissioners' questions reminded me what I've blanked out on. Um, the, uh, uh, that idea of like getting to a certain goal, a threshold, whether it's one in, in a hundred thousand or zero. Uh, I, I, I think it's interesting and I, I maybe just drop a seed in your mind that, you know, like, what if there's like a one in a million chance somebody's going to get killed by a car? And, but we, uh, and so we're trying to reduce that, you know, but our population keeps growing. So, you know, I'm one curious if you're gonna like adjust for population projection growth, you know? So like if we have one crash now and in, in, uh, 2035, if our population has grown by 50%, we may still have one, you know? And, and, uh, a similar thing is I know when I was younger, um, I never saw people walking on the side of the road or biking, you know, because it was very dangerous and the roads, there wasn't as good a quality facilities. And we're, we're, we're working very hard to, you know, offer multimodal transportation options and, and encourage more cycling, more walking, um, you know? Uh, so I'm curious if, if you guys are going to cap, factor in like, um, data about how much people are biking more now or, or riding more now and also project that out in the future. If, if we went from, you know, 1% bicyclists when I was a kid and now we're up to 10% in 2035, are we going to have 15% cyclists or 20% cyclists and kind of, um, you know, adjust our goals because if we have twice as many cyclists in 15 years or 20 years, we're likely to have twice as many accidents if we do nothing, right? So if, even if we stay flat, we might actually be successful just because the, the dangers are greater. Um, and, you know, factor for, for, uh, you know, change in those population statistics or, or trip type per statistics, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. And certainly it's something I, I think the per capita measure is, you know, something that I think helps, um, uh, account for that population growth. And hopefully we see the trend line as it relates to per capita, um, decreasing, and that would be probably the trend line that we would track more closely. But I think your point in terms of, um, and, and one thing that this effort will take into account is more of like the risk considerations. And I think as Shelley noted, you know, this presents an opportunity, um, the safe systems approach kind of focuses on being proactive. And so rather than reactive, which is, you know, would be looking just at the kind of the crash trends, we can, uh, analyze and evaluate those risk factors and account for those as well, uh, through this planning process to identify, you know, priority corridors where there is, you know, infrastructure or other characteristics or considerations or, or contributing factors that, that may not be reflected in the data, but can be accounted for in other ways. So, um, lack of sidewalks, lack of bike lanes, you know, those are clear risk factors, but there might be other risk factors that we can also consider and, and account for.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we measure success fairly. And, you know, when, when we've, when we have more people bicycling, the increase obviously rises to hit one just because there's more of them out there and we, we keep those kind of factors in consideration. When there's just more people here, um, uh, you know, we might, we might not get to zero, but if we're going flat or down, if, if, as the population, uh, rises, as more people walk and bike, I, I, I think we want to make sure we measure that so that we don't, uh, miss an opportunity to show success, even if, even if the numbers stay relatively flat.
Yeah, I think that will be part of the plan is putting some of those performance measures in place that, that zero, the zero goal is just one, we can look, definitely put in other measures. Um, that, and that keeps us accountable.
Yeah, like trips per hundred thousand bicycles or something, you know, or, you know, accidents per hundred thousand bicycles. So if bicyclists go up, you know, we measure that. Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Do commissioners have other questions?
I have a couple. Um, when we're looking at the goals, um, I think, you know, everyone clearly would like to achieve zero, you know, by 2035. But when we're looking at the data trends, um, over the last two years that we have data for, um, you know, serious accidents and fatalities have increased. So what is, I guess, pointing other jurisdictions and maybe us to, um, a goal of zero when it, when the data is kind of traveling in the other direction?
It's, it's interesting because it is the, 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 it's kind of almost a philosophical view is, is the goal something that should be aspirational? Or do you have a goal that is very practical? It's just how you, how do you view it? Um, and so it, it definitely, it, there's arguments for both. Um, and I think that's where, um, talking about the culture that you want to set and expectations that you want to share about traffic safety with the community. That's where the conversations start with, with our, our committees and with our community about having those discussions about what is an acceptable level of fatalities and serious life-changing injuries in our county. And, um, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a philosophical question. And those are what we will be having and we have had in some of our meetings is discussions about that.
Thank you. Um, you talked about best practices changing since the last, um, report. Uh, what are some of the lessons that were learned in between and what are some of those best practices that have changed?
I'll take that one. You want to take that one?
Sure. Uh, I think that we are, we are always learning from, we have new design standards that are always being upgraded as new technologies come onboard and incorporating those into our design elements and standards. There's also more evidence-based behavioral strategies and changes that are, there's always new studies about what's most effective. Uh, there's some things that are still really hard that we realize that that just being an engineering group in LUT that we can't tackle on our own, you know, we hate, one of our areas that we looked at, had looked at is impairment, distracted driving impairment, something we can't solve on our own and with engineering. So I think that there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot more to look at, but there's definitely new technologies that you've probably seen that you realize, you may, you may just drive by and don't realize that those, but, you know, employing more roundabouts like we are, looking at the rapid flashing beacons where people push the buttons and it flashes really bright that catch your attention. Um, even in, you know, looking at the big wheel, there's a lot of new technologies with our vehicles that, that are helping. So I think that it's, it's a ever-changing, um, every, ever-changing place that we're living in. It's very dynamic. And so part of our job is to keep up with those trends and understand the, a lot, a lot of, as engineers, we work with evidence-based. And before it becomes a, a, a practice or a standard for, for our discipline, it goes through a lot of scrutiny. And so, uh, not to say that we aren't willing to be at the forefront and try some new, new things and new techniques along the way, if, if, to, to figure out if the, they are going to make improvements to the, to the system. So those are just a few examples, but we are constantly looking at improving our lighting to LED lighting and, um, you know, other elements like that.
Uh, Commissioner Rosenberg.
Is this something that falls entirely under a department or are other departments supporting you? Because it sounds like emergency response, you know, if, just based on experience, the catastrophic issues are often on the rural roads where there is no cell coverage. So are those departments or organizations participating and, and helping you?
Yeah, internally, we're, we're bringing, you know, we're bringing in our health department. Um, again, their key, key part of this also are, obviously our sheriff's office as well. They, when they're experienced with that, um, we're also working with TVFNR as our, as one of our partners, one of our technical partners on this as well, that we're bringing into our committee as well.
Who is that? What does that stand for?
Walton Valley Fire and Rescue.
Thank you.
That will be, and then working with our city. So, you know, you've got banks that has its own fire and, you know, and so we, we are working with our city partners, city partners as well. Um, to be working on getting feedback on these strategies, solutions that we're looking at, policies, procedures, things like that, that we can, again, there's a lot of overlap in some of our, in our areas. Um, we're, we're working on, um, again, working on comprehensive strategies that, that don't, uh, necessarily, we're talking about strategies that don't just lie on county, county boundaries and city boundaries. These roads cross many. So looking at how we can be collaborative, comprehensive, to be most effective.
Like wait times for calling 911 for help, things like, is that part of?
That would be something that we would look, that would look, I think, you know, the last round, I think one of the things that was identified is that the new facility, the new 911 facility was something that was a need that was expressed in the last round. And I'm glad to see that a new facility is going online. And, but again, we're not going to, we're not going to, it's hard to measure the impacts of that. It takes a while sometimes for us to see the fruits of our labor, the fruits of our improvements out on the road to see it, see the impact on the numbers.
You just want to make sure this department's not carrying the entire burden.
No.
Makes a village for sure.
And, you know, and I think that the shared responsibility is creating a culture for each of us as individuals, as members of the community, to take safety of ourselves and our neighbor and the people who live down the street seriously. And that's a big, that's a big lift. That's why it takes partners to do that. You don't want an engineer doing that on their own.
Well, and, and, you know, we see real opportunity working with our partners at school districts as well. I mean, there it's for early education, uh, about safety, I think is, you know, a potential early win for us as well. So that's another key partner that we're engaged.
Any further questions? Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Um, at this time, we will move to our second work session, um, future work session topics.
Thank you, Vice Chair Maury B. Do and Planning Commission members, Teresa Turniak. And I had to write it down to Community Planning Section Manager. Um, so Dami and I and, and Carol are here today to talk about possible future work session topics, um, like the one we just had on the Transportation Safety Action Plan. So the nitty-gritty work of the Planning Commission is, um, on the land use ordinances that we bring forward that are proposing changes to our, um, comprehensive plan documents, including community plans, um, community development code, that sort of thing. Um, but in between those, because we do maybe three to 10 of those a year, depending on the year and the topics. Last year, um, I think we did just have three, but they were probably three of our biggest, um, the significant natural resources and the, the parking changes with the climate-friendly and equitable communities. Um, so in between those, um, we do a lot of work sessions. And, um, some of those are in projects that we're working on that may or may not result in an ordinance. Um, but there are things that we'd like to get your feedback on. We know that you have a lot of, um, real-world experience and, uh, input that could be really valuable for us moving forward on those. Others are topics that might just be of general interest, um, to you or that will help, um, in getting ready for ordinances that might be coming forward. So, uh, we wanted to go through the work sessions that we did this past year um, and then talk about ideas for, uh, work sessions for this year. And it may be even the, the biennium. So, um, we are now doing a work program that's two years, so we can think a little further out. Uh, so this is a list of the non-ordinance work session topics, um, that we covered this past year. Some of them we do, uh, go over every year kind of as a refresher, um, or every other year, depending on, um, what's going on. So legislative update, we typically will do, um, status report on state rulemaking. Um, we do a summary of recent land use ordinance actions and the planning work program. Um, we also then a lot of times do information sessions on, um, topics that will help the planning commission in, in your role. Uh, so public official ethics, parliamentary procedure, uh, Oregon Public Meeting Law, that sort of thing. And then typically before we bring an ordinance to And then typically before we bring an ordinance to the planning commission, we will do at least one. And you'll see here, um, sometimes multiple work sessions, um, depending on how complicated the ordinances are and how much kind of additional background and information about the code or, um, state law or that sort of thing that you might need to help you in making your recommendations to the, the board. So we did do two on the climate friendly, climate-friendly and equitable communities or CFAC work. And then four on the significant natural resources ordinance preparation. That ended up, I think, actually having three hearings as well. So it was, you know, most of you remember the, how complicated that was and work sessions, I think, really helped on that. Likely ordinances in this biennium then. We've just been working on the work program and we'll have a draft of that out April 15th-ish. And so in that, we're identifying what, what the topics will be for ordinances. So we do have a requirement to adopt, uh, boundaries for our town centers. Raleigh Hills is almost all within unincorporated Washington County, so we do need that. But we do have little parts in the Sunset Transit and the Washington Square Regional centers. And so, uh, we've been told by Metro that we should probably also adopt those since our area is, is in those as well. Uh, and that needs to be done by the end of the year. We are proposing a rural accessory dwelling unit allowance. So that'll be an ordinance. We're still a little up in the air on, um, this, uh, Federal Emergency Management Agency requirement to do what they're calling pre-implementation compliance measures. This results from a biological opinion about impacts from floodplain requirements on the endangered species that we have in, in the area. Those are mostly salmon. And so FEMA did come out with some requirements and a very quick timeline for doing them. We've been in conversations with them and we do somewhat have a timeline, but there are issues with it. So everyone kind of across the state is in the same boat, but we will probably need to do something with our floodplain regulations. We are working on a number of housing amendments that are including some related to middle housing to help simplify some of our requirements, clarify some of our requirements. A couple of significant natural resource items that will be coming forward. One, uh, you'll recall the last, the two ordinances we did last year focused on the urban area. And, uh, we do also need to develop clear and regu-, clear objective regulations for, um, housing in the rural area. So that'll be coming forward. And then we also will probably have some cleanup items from the last ordinance and some map, potential map changes. We are starting a code assessment project, and so there will be code changes coming out of that. Minor code amendments, we always do, uh, but we try to always do, uh, minor code amendments to address, um, topics, issues that have come up usually with current planning and implementing, um, the code and issues come up and we, we try to address those in kind of doing them all together. They're usually smaller topics and so they don't really warrant a full ordinance themselves. Sherwood, the Metro approved the Sherwood Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. And so once that is through any appeals, uh, we'll do the same kind of thing that we've done with, with some of the other UGB expansion areas and kind of bring them into the urban area from our rural plan and give them, uh, urban designations and that sort of thing. And then, uh, it was already mentioned, I think, uh, the North Plains relook at their urban growth boundary. If they do move forward with that, that would also be one that we would, uh, need to bring forward as an ordinance. So based on that, what we know is, is coming up, we, um, started coming up with a list of topic ideas for, uh, for work sessions. A couple of people have indicated interest in the legislative session. Uh, there's a lot going on there. So we have talked about maybe, uh, the next meeting, coming back with, um, kind of a mid-session legislative update. And then at the end of the session, we can, uh, once we know what actually passed and we'll maybe have an idea of what we need to do to address that, we can come back and talk with the planning commission about that. The planning work program, like I said, that'll be coming out April 15th. There'll be a 45-day review period, so we do want to come back to the planning commission and let you know exactly what's in your, in there and get your feedback on that. And then, um, the community development code assessment, we are just starting that. It's a 15-month process. And so we'll want to get any early thoughts you have, uh, including we'll have a technical advisory committee and we'll want to have a couple of members of the planning commission on that. So we'd be asking you, um, to suggest to people maybe for that. So those are the items in red that I just talked about. Those are the ones we probably will come to you with in mid-April. The next two rural accessory dwelling units, we, um, are preparing a briefing memo that will go out with the work program. And so we'd like to come back to the planning commission, talk that through and get your early thoughts on that. And then the town center boundaries, um, as well. So those in green, those we're thinking about maybe for the May meeting. And we're, we're thinking of, um, unless we have more pressing items that we maybe just have the night meeting in April and in, and focus on these kind of work session topics. And then, as I mentioned, the FEMA, um, compliance measures, uh, the near-term housing amendments. There are going to be some new requirements, uh, related to housing and housing needs analyses and housing production strategies. As we know more about that, there is also a, a metro committee that'll be looking at how metro is involved and what additional things, hopefully not too many, we need to do to meet metro requirements. So, um, we'll want to, to come back and talk about that. The rural significant natural resources and North Plains. We also have a project we'll talk about a little bit in the work program. It's called the Urban Services Framework Planning. That's a project that, um, is at the direction of the County Administrative Officer. It's a technical expert, exercise exploring financial and practical considerations of providing urban services in the urban unincorporated area. So it'll come out with some findings. This, it won't be, uh, something where we do something right away. It'll, it's, it's a lot of analysis and, um, it's a two-year, uh, process. We have a couple of staff that we've hired, um, on a temporary basis and a consultant team. And so that's likely something that as, as we start having some findings, it would be interesting to bring those to the planning commission. There is some future work that we need to do on the CFAC, the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities work. Both transportation and land use related. We've talked about maybe doing a 101 on community planning and on transportation planning. And then for transportation, I don't know if you want to mention those.
Sure. Yeah. So we have a couple of items, a new process that we've established or in the process of establishing, which is this Transportation Development Review Process. And I, uh, Carol mentioned it. Just in terms of better helping and facilitating coordination with our city partners on development review as it relates to transportation impacts. We are also in the process of, and will be finalizing the Farmington Road Concept Plan. Obviously impacts, uh, large, larger community than just the immediate area. It's a major corridor and so maybe of interest to, um, planning commission, it may also inform a transportation system plan update, and that obviously comes before you as well. We will be kicking off an active transportation plan. This is a grant-funded project later this year. And, um, so we would anticipate having a touch point associated with that. That will be a component, uh, kind of a, uh, and part of the umbrella of the major transportation system plan update, which we will also have a, a couple of touch points with the planning commission. And, uh, so we'll be kind of finalizing the scope of that work, uh, later this year. And I think that would probably be a good opportunity to bring forward kind of what we're anticipating. It's going to be a multi-year effort. So we appreciate having, uh, planning commission's feedback as part of that.
Good. So in addition to some of those topics, um, already mentioned, we did do a survey in 2021. And then over the last couple of years, as planning commissioners have mentioned that they were interested in a topic, we've kind of written it down. So these are some of the other ideas that we've, um, heard interest in. Statewide planning goals, um, racist planning history and that, that actually, we are required under the new state laws for what we'll need to do with the housing needs analysis to look at, um, kind of the impacts of what we have done in the past on, um, on underrepresented people. So we will be kind of weaving that, I think, into the work that we'll bring forward on housing.
It's transportation, actually.
Yeah. Rural land uses, some of that will probably be woven in as we look at the rural accessory dwelling units. Clear and objective standards that will be, when we do the code assessment, kind of the first part of that will be a look at clear and objective standards, um, as required by state law. Complete streets, don't know if that.
That, that's actually, uh, one item that we probably should add to the previous list.
Okay.
That, that is work that, um, our engineering team will be doing, uh, an update to our road construction and design standards, uh, this year. And, um, so it will be also aligned with major transportation system plan updates. I think that, that would be a, a good one to bring, bring forward if there's interest.
Simplifying the land use process, reducing time, cost savings, et cetera. And that, that is something that as we do the code assessment, that'll be a big part of that. History of encouraging and discouraging market race, housing affordability. So I think there'll be a number of housing-related topics that we'll be bringing forward. So we'll have a, a lot of what's happening. The legislature is focused on housing and how to get more housing, how to increase housing production, how to remove barriers to housing. So, um, I think we'll have a lot of opportunities to, um, to talk about that. And then, um, a planning commission job description, and that was something that came up in, in one of our discussions about how, how things work between, uh, the planning commission making recommendations and the staff making recommendations and then the, the board taking action. So those are the long lists of things that, that we have and that we've heard from you. And very interested to hear if there are particular things that you really want us to, to bring soon or you really would like us to, to focus on, um, that are on those lists or things that aren't on the lists that you're interested in. And with that, I'll throw it open.
Thank you. Commissioner Will.
I guess maybe to answer your question, by way of a question, you said in the list, uh, some missing middle housing updates. Uh, can you maybe expand on that? Is that like corrections to what we got past and things that aren't working or? What was that?
Yeah, we've been, we've been working. It's, um, it will partly be about middle housing, um, and partly be about housing in general. But some things that we've, we've identified that we don't want to wait a year and a half while the code assessment is being done. You know, wait until then to do them. Um, so some of them, I know one of them is looking at, uh, mixed counties, mixed use requirements and, um, the requirement for commercial on the ground floor. That's not a middle housing thing, but, um, on middle housing, we are, we have a consultant actually looking at, if you want to mix the different middle housing types, um, how might you be able to do that? Because they're kind of all separate right now. The requirements are all separate. There are also some potential changes. Um, there's House Bill 2138 that is making a lot of changes to middle housing. So, um, you know, some of that might be as part of the kind of legislative update. We'll talk about that. We're looking internally just on terms of our process and how we describe the different types of middle housing. And how does that, uh, align or not align with the building code? Um, screening some confusion there. So, um, so yeah, we're going to be looking at our own internal processes and interpretations. And would potentially have a, a whole list of recommendations around middle housing to, to bring back.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, like they said about transportation, sometimes data takes a year or two to come together. I'm not sure if missing middle housing has been, you know, in effect, long enough to get enough answers. But that would be my answer to the question is I'm very curious how the missing middle housing, you know, is coming along. Is it successful? Are people applying it? You know, um, that, that'll be very interesting for me as, as a member of the planning commission who participated in that process a while back here now.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I like learning, um, and I'm a nerd. And I think some of the, the things that I want to learn about are super wonky, and so I acknowledge that. And maybe it's not appropriate, but I'm, I want to share them anyways. Definitely want to learn more about middle housing. Um, I love all these ideas. I'm excited about all these things here. Regional projects are on my mind. Um, I went to a recent event for the Salmonberry Trail. I know that's something that's impacting multiple cities and, um, unincorporated area. So I'd love to learn more about that and maybe the planning commission has a role. And then I was just at the, uh, county commissioner's, uh, budget, uh, info session and things are tight. And I'm remembering something that I think staff that y'all presented just mentioned once about how like many of your positions within your, within your department are mandated. And I would just like to learn more about the department and like, and how it connects to budget needs. And, um, I think that would, I think that would make us all more effective. Thanks for considering.
And yeah, we can definitely, when we talk about the work program, um, we can bring a lot of that information to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson.
So I guess I just had a couple of questions slash comments. I know with housing, the housing things, there's so much going on in the legislature and, uh, maybe waiting till the dust settles like early fall and around like the FEMA thing, I think that there's going to be some lawsuits that are coming on that. So probably, uh, I would hate for us to spend a lot of time just to have it be tossed out and reworked. And then lastly, I, I would be curious, uh, one thing that wasn't up there, but I think it kind of, uh, tabs into the ADU part, but, um, agritourism in, um, rural areas, because a lot of folks are not, you know, being able to make men, ends meet just simply with crops. And what that looks like going forward, other areas that are still rural or agrarian, how they have been able to adopt and allow some of that, um, to help those farms stay viable.
And on, on that last one, we did do a rural tourism study five or six years ago now. And that is something that was on our work. It's actually on, on tier two of our work program to, to move forward with maybe, um, some rural tourism regulations. But it hasn't, it hasn't risen. But yeah, we could.
I just think budgetarily, that might be a good thing. You know, I think that there's, uh, opportunities for a lot of folks making, you know, clear rules.
Commissioner Will?
Commissioner Will?
Sorry, I forgot to lower my hand, but I wanted to echo the last couple of comments. Good job, good ideas.
Do others have comments, questions? Okay, thank you Teresa and Diami for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're going to keep us busy.
Yeah.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, we're skipping over the elections at the moment. So as consideration of minutes, we have one set of minutes from January 15th. Are there any corrections? Seeing none without objection, the minutes for January 15th, 2025 are accepted and submitted. Next agenda item is Planning Commission announcements. Do any commissioners have anything they'd like to share? Commissioner Will?
Well, I would just like to echo the staff's comment about this upcoming volunteer recognition event. I attended last year and had a great time. I won a raffle basket prize and I think I was the only planning commissioner in attendance. So if anybody's wavering and thinking about going, I highly recommend it. And it was, it was fun for me to meet people from other commissions and other volunteer committees serving the county and just socially talk with them. They also had some good speakers, like county commissioners came and spoke and different political representatives were there to rub elbows with and talk to and, and hear their thoughts about, you know, the community growth and, and, and just how we can make our, our county better. So I wanted to put in a encouragement for other members to attend and, you know, maybe, maybe you'll get, get, get a winning raffle ticket like I did. So thank you.
Thanks. Any others? I just would, I would like to welcome Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Just again and just give you the opportunity, if you would like, to say a little bit about yourselves and why you applied and are interested in being on Planning Commission.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I guess the key thing is Washington County is my home and I have been, our family has been here. We have three generations in the valley, been here over 50 years. And just seeing all the changes that have happened in the last 50 years, to me, I have a little time to be able to give back. My company supports this work and make sure that we set the table so it is a lovely place that we have enjoyed for the last, you know, however long and that our kids will want to stay here and they'll have the opportunities to live, work and play here.
I want to echo what, what Commissioner Carlson has said. I moved to Washington County in 1980, not thinking that I would be here more than four years. It's over 40. So I, I have four children who grew up on our farm. Two of them live out of state, two of them live in Washington County. And I would like to ensure that at some point they'd all like to live here.
Well, thank you for being here. We're excited to work with you.
Just you wait.
Okay, well, at this time, we will move to the Chair and Vice Chair elections and I'm not sure who is going to go over the guidelines, but I will turn it over to either Ms. Sato or Mr. Barkowitz.
Rock, paper, scissors? Okay. Well, it looks like you're looking, you're all... Okay. I'll give you a little kind of a feel about how generally it goes. It's not super, super formal, but basically what happens is, the formal part is when you're actually voting. So the informal part is the nominating process. So the, the number one rule is you cannot, like the, like Vice Chair Badoo cannot nominate herself for the position of either chair or vice chair. Somebody will have to make that motion or make that suggestion. And then there's a, there's a period of time where Vice Chair Badoo could say, yes, I'm interested, or no, I decline. And there's just a little discussion about, you know, who would like to, you know, be nominated and be considered in the running. In the past, usually folks, there's only been really like one person who really wanted to be and, and was prepared to be the chair and then also the vice chair. If we do have a situation where there are a couple of people running for the same position, I'm going to have to figure out a way that, that it doesn't hurt anybody's feelings to like maybe take a voice vote or something like that. But so far, we've never run into that situation. So the first thing is we will do the nominations for the chair position. And then what happens then is there is a, a motion, a formal motion to nominate a person. There's a second, a discussion, and sometimes there's no discussion and you go straight to a vote. And then after you're done there, then you can move on to the vice chair position. Same process. Any questions? Okay.
Do you want to quickly go over, well, I guess we'll just say, as new members of the Planning Commission, you are both free to vote or free to abstain, whatever you feel comfortable with.
I would also ask that, so Vice Chair Badoo, that when we do the, the, the motion and the second and then the voting, if you could, sometimes people will say yay at the same time and step over each other. So if we do hear that, we would like to hear, you know, how many people, you know, voted for, instead of just letting the two people who stepped on each other, three stepped on each other, you know, move forwards. We need to have a record of, you know, how many people and who voted in favor. Also, if you could call out if there are any abstentions so that we get on the record if there are any other exceptions. I understand Commissioner, or Commissioner Just and Commissioner Carlson have already said that they would abstain, but maybe there are other members who would also, you know, want to abstain. And I see a, a hand up there. Mr. Frye?
I was just raising my hand to recommend or nominate Vice Chair Mori Badoo to be chair if she's willing. She's, she's done a great job as vice chair and I think she'd do a great job as chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Frye.
Can I second?
You can second. Sure, sure, you can second. And then are you interested in the position?
I, I am interested in the position. Is there any discussion?
Are there any other nominations?
Nice things. I'll, I just want to highlight that I, I know there was a meeting that you chaired last year that was long and intense and I just, I really appreciate your style and the way you welcome people and like, you'll be great at this.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Will, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I would like to echo that, Vice Chair Mori Badoo, I remember when you were not vice chair and when you became vice chair, I was very happy to see you step into that role. And what's really great is when the chair was absent and you stepped up to run the meetings, I was very impressed and I, I was going to nominate you, nobody else did. So I'm very happy for the commission and for the county that you are willing to fill this role and I, I think you're going to do a great job. So I support you.
Thank you, I'm very flattered.
Yeah, people are watching, good job.
Any other nominations? Okay, well, I guess you could go ahead and move to a vote.
Okay, I think maybe the cleanest would be to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Carlson?
Abstaining due to news.
Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner Just?
Abstain.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Whips is not here. Commissioner Will?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Mori Badoo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Basically, at that point, if you said no...
Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate it. We will now move on to vice chair nominations. Are there any commissioners who would like to make a nomination? I would like to nominate Commissioner Monte Blanco. I think she has come to Planning Commission with a lot of great engagement and questions and I appreciate her, her contributions to the Planning Commission.
Oh, Mr. Frye, hand up.
I would agree, I was going to make a similar comment, but I didn't want to be the only one making these recommendations, so I kind of waited.
So will you second?
I will second that, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Are there other nominations? Any further discussion?
Are you willing to take the position?
Yes, thank you very much, yes, thank you. I appreciate the encouragement and support.
Okay, let's move to the vote. Commissioner Carlson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Frye?
Yes.
Commissioner Just?
Abstain.
Commissioner Monte Blanco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Whips is out. Commissioner Will?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Mori Badoo?
Yes.
Or Chair Mori Badoo. And again, it's unanimous. Well, with that, thank you, everyone, for attending today's meeting. And without further comments, we are adjourned.